So the meeting's now being recorded and appreciate everybody getting together to talk this afternoon. So this meeting is a follow up from our discussion in January before the P and Z committee. Where there were a number of different comments about stormwater related items. And figured it would be just best to talk and focus on this amongst a smaller group. So from our side, we have Matt Bonifant with BXP. Mark Looney, who you all know with Gully. Dominic Barberas Dom is with Urban, who is doing the civil work and stormwater work. And Andrew Kridlin is with OJB, our landscape architect. So our agenda for this meeting was to go over our stormwater plans for the property. Both in terms of how it's going to function, be located and be able to treat for quantity and quality. And then also talk about the streetscape and how we are planning plantings and how that's going to contribute to your stormwater management program dispersed across the site. I know that Tammy, I saw you had some, some questions, you know, more broadly than that about other parts of the development and other attributes about it. If we have some time at the end of the call, we can absolutely get into that, but otherwise if you know, we end up diving into the stormwater, happy to talk and continue, but I'll stop there. Does anybody else have anything else they want to make sure we address today? So in absence of that, I'll, I'll kick it off if Mark, if you want to just say kind of a few works, words to kind of kick off and explain the stormwater program.
Well, so I'm going to let Dom explain the details of it. And Dom, if you don't have the plan set up, if you pull the plan setup so that everybody can, can look at it, but I think the important, one of the, the, one of the most important elements to remember is that this is phase two of a two-phase development that was approved almost seven years ago at this point in 2018. That at the time included the entirety or, or the, the, the plan in its entirety for how to treat stormwater, both from a quantity standpoint and a quality standpoint. And so the standards that were in place at the time that that approval was granted were obviously slightly different than they are today. Both from a state stormwater management perspective, a stormwater ordinance perspective and a comprehensive plan perspective. But nonetheless, that plan began to be executed with the development and completion of phase one of the project. And so there is, as Dom will explain, there is a lot of infrastructure that was constructed as part of phase one to accommodate the stormwater plan for the, not just the, the overall development, but as we'll explain, there are a fair amount of off-site properties that drain into this project as well that had to address those off-site runoff needs. And, and I'm sure all of you are aware, if you have driven by there ever really, the high point on the side is to the right-hand side of this, of the screen. The low point is to the left-hand side of the screen. And then this property actually then drains further to the west over towards West Market and Sugarland Run area. And so understanding that what the phase one plan was trying to do is address all of the, or the bulk of the stormwater management needs. Because phase one was on the lower end of the site, it had to be designed to accommodate the runoff that was coming from the high end of the site, which was phase two, and then the Discovery Square buildings to the, to the right-hand side of the page. And so the facilities as Dom will walk through in a second were all sized to accommodate principally the quantity of runoff coming from the site to slow the rate of discharge into ultimately Sugarland Run. And, and how to treat the water from a quality perspective, both before it reaches the detention facilities constructed in phase one and after it leaves the site and heads farther to the west. And so we're not, the point is, we're not starting phase two as a greenfield slate where we have the ability to design a, an independent stormwater detention facility for phase two. We've already invested as part of phase one, or BXP has invested as part of phase one. A significant amount of the infrastructure that was intended to capture the runoff from, from phase two and really from the off-site properties. And so I'll, with that as context, I'll let Dom explain the details of it and I'll try to finish up my sandwich while he does.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. That's a really good introduction. Can everyone hear me? Just want to make sure before, okay, cool. Yeah. So as Mark was saying, you know, and I'm sure you guys have driven over there. Phase one is already built, which is this part of the property. And as Mark was saying, a whole bunch of stormwater management facilities were installed and constructed with that piece of the construction of the site. Okay. So, um, let me flip to our stormwater management map sheet here. So I can kind of better.
I gotta do this meeting.
Okay, so. On the phase one portion of the site, we even, I'm just going to list out the facilities that we've installed. Just so everyone's kind of knows what's going on. So they've installed five manufactured treatment devices, three underground stormwater management vaults, some urban buyer attention, vegetated roofs and rainwater harvesting. Okay. So that's all stuff that is in, you know, the left of this red line here. Okay.
Hey Dom, can you, can you point out specifically sort of where some of those elements are just for those of us who are legend challenged?
Sure. So, um, and you know, this is a, the rezoning layout. So the site plan, you know, is more specific and slightly tweaked, but there's a stormwater management vault kind of right in here. This rectangle here. There's a stormwater management vault kind of up here in this area. Urban buyer attention is along this streetscape. And some of this streetscape is along Progress Street. And then this hexagon hatch is all rainwater harvesting. So these are rainwater harvesting and then these, the yellow triangle hatches are vegetated roof. Okay.
And what is, what are those areas capturing at the moment? What's, where, what, what runoff flows into those various elements?
Sure. So vegetated roof is just, you know, the footprint. It's just the footprint. So, because you know, it's picking up runoff straight from the sky, you know, when it rains. So that, that, that's what the vegetators picking up, the rainwater harvesting is picking up, you know, the building footprints for building C and Towers A and B. So that's what that's picking up. And then urban buyer attention is picking up the, uh, the runoff in the streetscapes for along Progress Street here. For the urban buyer intention. And then the stormwater management vaults are picking up the flows from phase one and phase two, as Mark was kind of describing. Those stormwater management vaults were designed to handle phase one and the future phase two flows. So. Yeah. Does that all kind of make sense? Okay. So moving on.
Can you show them what, how, what, what the drainage shed looks like for these various things? Just so they have a sense of where the water's coming from?
Yeah. And so this, this is kind of a drainage area map. And it's kind of related to our, the BRR, the BRRM spreadsheets that we included in the plan set. But drainage area A goes to the stormwater management vault up here. Okay. Drainage area B and drainage area C go to the, the stormwater management vault in this area. Okay. And then drainage area D, which is on the phase two part of the site, drains ultimately into the stormwater management vault up here. And drainage area E goes to the stormwater management vault in this area. All right.
How is the sizing of those vaults determined?
So besides them, you know, there's the energy balance equations that we use to size them. And obviously we size them to accommodate the total drainage areas going to them. So it accommodates, for example, drainage area A and drainage area D going to that stormwater management vault north block D. And then the stormwater management vault kind of in the middle here accommodates the drainage areas from drainage area C, drainage area B and drainage area E. So their size to pick up all that area. Okay. So let me zoom back out here. So in the, in the phase two portion of the site, we, we've got some, we propose urban buyer attention, vegetated roofs and rainwater harvesting to meet the water quality requirements. Okay. And, and as we were just discussing, the phase two site drains through the phase one site to the outfall, you know, as, as Mark was saying. So the phase, it phase two drains through the manufactured treatment devices that we have on phase one into the stormwater management vault. And let me flip over, I've got, we've got a schematic in the plan kind of explaining what everything is going through basically. So drainage area A, drainage area B, drainage area C are all on phase one. And then drainage area D and drainage area E are on phase two. And as part of phase one, you know, we had, as I said, we had five manufactured treatment devices. And we have in one drainage area, we have two treatment devices in series. So they're kind of double treating the area. And then we also have in drainage area B, we have three jellyfish manufactured treatment devices. So we're triple treating. Okay. So we, they've installed quite a few manufactured treatment devices to kind of treat our, the runoff on the site. Okay. Now, um, we are only taking credit, you know, per, per county comments, we're only taking credit for one treatment device, even though phase two is flowing through the, the, all three of the devices that were installed on phase one. We're only taking credit for one because the county is, it's not letting us take credit for all three. But when, when phase one was designed, we, and we anticipated that we were taking credit for all, for all the manufactured treatment devices installed in phase one. Okay. Does that make sense? I don't know if I explained that well enough or not, but let me know if there's any questions.
And when you, when you say the county's not giving you credit for it, you're, what, what do you mean by that? I guess, do, do they mean that they're not necessary? Or do they mean that you've met the standards and so there's no need to do more than that? Or what, what, what do you mean by no credit?
What I mean is like I, in our VRM spreadsheet, we couldn't take credit for triple treating a drainage area. For example, we only have it going to one manufactured treatment device, even though it's going through three, for example.
To said another way, you don't get any more credit for three than you do for one.
That's right. But we're still meeting the requirements overall. But I just wanted to note that like, we even, we've installed more manufactured treatment devices. And, you know, a lot of money went into that for all those water quality BMPs. So I just wanted to highlight that. Okay. So I guess briefly, you know, there's the comprehensive plan goals for Reston, right? And so I'm just going to go kind of touch on each one. So there's the one about control stormwater such that total phosphorus load is no greater than what should be required for new development pursuant to Virginia stormwater regulations. So we've used the new development BRRM spreadsheet for this. And I guess I don't know how in the weeds we need to get really, but we're meeting the new, new development requirements. Okay. So, and just to kind of explain, so we have a, a new development spreadsheet that covers the entire site area, phase one and phase two. And then we also have a spreadsheet that covers just the phase two area as well. So we have two spreadsheets in here. So just to show how we're meeting the requirements for the phase two area only. So that's that comprehensive plan goal. And then the next one is, you know, the one inch retention one, which I think is the main one that I saw that Reston Planning Zone he had some questions on. So I guess I just want to read through, I just want to read the comprehensive plan goal that's for this one, just to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page for it. So this, it says in developments with an intensity of 1.0 FAR and greater, retain to the extent feasible, the first inch of rainfall onsite through infiltration, evapotranspiration and/or reuse. If on a given site, the retention of the first inch of rainfall is demonstrated not to be fully achievable, the portion of the first inch of rain that cannot be retained should be detained and gradually, gradually released. Okay. So we have the, the spreadsheets, the one inch retention spreadsheets on here. And as Matt, as a Mark was describing earlier, you know, this one inch retention comprehensive plan goal was not in the comp plan when phase one was going through, was, uh, was not in. That comp, this one inch retention comprehensive plan goal was not in effect back when phase one was being built. And, and during, was not in effect during the previous rezoning application, the one that's previously approved. Right? So. We are, we have two spreadsheets in the plan. We have one for the phase one area and one for the phase two area. We are taking credit for phase one BMPs that were installed with phase one and not counting it towards the, the phase two area that's summing up the computation for how much needs to be retained onsite. But we are taking credit for how much is being retained with the phase one BMPs. Okay. So the short of it is we are getting, we are retaining point seven two inches, including phase one and phase two in that computation. Okay. So it's not one inch, but it's point seven two inches. And that is the maximum extent feasible or practicable to what we can retain. So, and the, the remaining point two eight inches is detained in the three stormwater management vaults constructed in phase one. Okay. And we have a table. I'm comparing the pre and post-development flows from, from our site. And as you can see, we're significantly reducing the, the flows in the post-developed condition compared to the pre-development condition. So we're, we're basically really over detaining in a, in the stormwater management vaults, the flow, the, the runoff from, from our site. So therefore in combination with the, you know, the urban buyer attention, rainwater harvesting and the vegetated roof that we have, we are in combination with, with the vegetated roof, the urban buyer attention and the rainwater harvesting, as well as the stormwater management vaults that are detaining a good port, a massive amount, we are meeting this goal. Okay. All right. So then in addition, there's the, the, the peak flow reduction in the comp plan as well, which as, as you can see on this chart, it wants the, to reduce the peak runoff rate for the two-year 24-hour storm in the existing condition by at least 30%. And as you can see, we're reducing it by 85%. So we're, we're meeting that goal as well. Okay. So that's kind of the higher level stuff I wanted to discuss. And I'm going to flip back to this sheet and also highlight that we are redeveloping an existing pond that is right here that we're we're, we're redeveloping it into put a park here. So we're going to replace that existing pond with an underground stormwater management vault and a manufactured treatment device to handle the flow that's coming in to that pond today. And yeah, so does anybody have any questions?
Mark, Mark and Dominic, this is David Vanel. I've got a couple of, if we could go back to the schematic where you have the, the various sections and the water flows through the, I, I get vegetative roofs and I assume the, the, yeah, thank you. I get vegetative roofs. What precisely does the jellyfish thing do? That's part one. And part two is I see only, I know you said you have three vaults. I see only one in that, in that schematic. And I'm, I'm not quite sure.
Well, so in the latter, well, so I'll be flipping and say jellyfish sting, but beyond that, the, the, I'll let Dom talk about the technical aspects of that. But to answer your second question, it may be that that plan doesn't show the vaults as clearly because there's a lot of different layers on there. And these, these plans are really geared towards, I'll call it the phase two improvements because phase one is essentially existing. And so if we need to, we can pull up the site plan for phase one, David, and show you the, the exact dimensions because they're really big.
No, I'm sure they are. Yeah. I recall, I recall noting that when I looked at the plan before. So the jellyfish thing is, is one of those manufactured devices either to filter or does it not only filter, but also slow down the volume of water moving through the, through the system?
Yeah. So it's, it's filtering and removing phosphorus from, from the runoff as it passes through it. It doesn't really, it's not doing any, any detention really. It's the, the jellyfish is only for water quality. So it's filtering and removing phosphorus from the runoff as it gets to the vault.
Okay. And, and what do you consider the outfall?
The outfall is here. Let me, let me go back to our map here. So like our outfall on our site is right here. And there's an existing storm culvert that crosses town center parkway and then runs kind of along town center parkway and turns to the left here along Sunset Hills Road. So the outflow on our site is, is right, is the structure right here tying into this existing culvert. So that, that's what we're considering the outfall.
And what is, where, what is the first body of water, stormwater retention that, that you could see from the road? After, after that outfall gets off your property? Sit down by the, the Fairfax County Parkway?
Yeah. So it, it outfalls into Sugarland Run as, as Mark mentioned. So it's all in pipes. And I don't have my views only on this, you know, I.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah.
But yeah, it wraps around town center, uh, town center parkway and Sunset Hills Road kind of wraps around RTC West here. And then if I recall, it goes on the other side of RTC West, it then goes behind, turns back up north and kind of wraps around behind West Market and whatnot, and then hits Sugarland Run.
So that, that one behind West Market is where is, is the first visible body of water that this thing dumps into?
Yes. Okay. And now, and now that we're, I have, I'm remembering that we have an outfall map on here. Yes. Okay. Okay. Yeah. So it's this, yeah, this is it right here. So obviously this is an old topography map, right?
Sure.
The existing condition, but there's an existing storm that runs this way going through here. And then Sugarland, yeah, this is Sugarland Run right here. So it's hitting Sugarland Run on the other side of Fairfax County Parkway. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe Dom, there's a storm pond there that exists before it hits Sugarland Run too, right?
Right. Yeah. You're right.
Meaning like, if you, if you look where the arrows all converge to the, call it upper left, I think that's a storm pond right there. If memory serves me correctly.
Yeah, I think you're right, Mark. Yeah. And then I will also, I just also want to mention too, we also included in the plan set, I pulled some plans from the site plan that did phase one. So they're in this plan set. So this is what the, there's two sheets in here that show what was built with phase one. So I can just kind of highlight. So like, here's that stormwater management vault kind of in the middle of the site here. Okay. Here's a jellyfish manufactured treatment device here. And then here's the second one. And here's the third one right here. And then here's the, the other stormwater management vault up here.
And can you describe like how big those are dimensions or volume or both?
Oh yeah, they're, they're massive.
Two is over two million gallons.
Yeah, it, it's incredibly deep and it's being pumped. So that, that's how, that's how it's so big. Um, we're pumping it out through here. I, I can pull up the, the sheets from the site plan to kind of give some better dimensions if we want to, if that's what we want to do. I just want, I don't have it handy right now.
When it is pumped, where does the water go? I mean, I know that you're, you obviously are going to have overfill of these gigantic balls, given the massive floor area that you're draining. But do these go to the alt, oh, outfield and then the circuitous route to Sugarland Run through pipes? Or is at some point this going to breach the ability of the pipes to handle this?
So it, it's going to be pumped out and, and go into the storm pipes that tie into the existing run here.
Okay.
And, and all these pipes are designed to handle the 10-year flow from that.
So they are massive.
Yeah. I mean, this is a 43-inch by 68-inch elliptical pipe. And, and these, yeah, these are existing 60-inch pipes that we're tying into. So yes, they're, they're, they're massive. Yeah.
And that is that you have not put those in, that is county. Existing county stormwater.
Yes.
Dominic, can you? This is John. I do have a question. So I believe you said you're achieving point seven two inches of retention or something similar to that. And I know the comp plan requires one inch now. What's the county saying about that differential?
Well, in, in so that, and that's why I wanted to read, that's why I read the, what it says in the comp plan. Because it says in the, the section for that, it says, if it's not If it's not fully, if the one inch is not fully achievable, the portion of the first inch of rain that cannot be retained should be detained gradually released. So that, that's why I highlighted the. Um, the pre and post development flows from our storm water management vaults, so we're detaining the rest of it. And we met with the county and they kind, when we walked them through all that, they kind of agreed with. Uh, what we were doing. So, one, once we explained it to them.
Interesting. When, on other projects, they've, they've been pushing for. One inch and, and pointing us to. Tysons and saying they achieved it in Tysons. You know, you can achieve it here and, and I understand the struggles because I deal with it every day, I'm just.
Johnny, you may have missed the, you may have missed the intro, but, but the bulk of what. He's, all the vaults. Were designed and constructed based on the twenty eighteen approvals. Because this is the low point of the site and so that one inch requirement didn't exist. Under the twenty eighteen approvals. And so therefore. The, I mean, even though we're, we're achieving. You know, almost three quarters of an inch of, of retention. But. The vaults were, were, the whole plan was established before the one inch standard came into being. And so consequently, we're. We're, we're dealing with the, I'll call it the second phase of a larger, a larger site area. Most of the Tyson's projects or many of the Tyson's projects, I'll say. Started with that, their initial approvals mandated that first inch. Whereas this is a second approval or really a third approval for this site and the one inch standard has been in, has been. Added to the expectation on the third. On the third approval. And so it's not really. It, it's, it's an apples to oranges comparison with Tyson's is my point.
Thank you for saying that, I understand that. Um, so the county's okay with not achieving the one inch?
The gavel hasn't gone down on the board vote yet, but so far, um. The stormwater folks are satisfied with what we've shown them, yes.
Wow, a little surprised.
I, I would like to bring up that. Um, Reston has experienced hundred year. Rain twice. In the last several years, and I know this. Because RA bridges were lifted and removed from their sites. With this incredible. Onslaught of rain. And we're talking about. A maximum tenure. Um, so. Just, obviously. You, yeah. It's very difficult, not impossible to accommodate this incredible. Global warming, climate change, change in precipitation, however. Given this facilities that you have on site and that you've had. Approved already for phase one. And now you're claiming that when you did phase one, you got phase two also. But I will tell you, Mark, we never, we the P and Z, I was on and asked you not. To go for phase two because we didn't know and you stated out of your mouth, you didn't know what phase two was gonna be yet. But you went ahead and had that approved, well, unquote, well, whatever. But the point is, if we get these deluges that are astronomical. What is the physical? I assume there will be damage to your property, but the downhill people.
So, so one, one of those hundred years, yeah, let me, let me answer. So one of those hundred year storms came after. Phase one was complete or largely complete. And so there was no flooding associated with that in, in large measure. Because of the size of the vaults that were constructed.
Right, good, that's perfect, thank you.
The, the other answer is. As you know. And folks don't like to talk about this. The Reston's five lakes. Are stormwater ponds first and foremost.
Correct.
And. You don't really have stormwater management facilities beyond those lakes in large portions of Reston. And the flooding that has taken place over the years is not in. Places like, and not in and not because of places like this.
No, that's true.
That have come online decades after. We knew better. Than to just do ponds and open channels. And so, the, I, I mean, we all get the desire to clean up stuff and make it the best it can be and all those other things. It, it's just not even a comparison to look at development projects that have been built in the last twenty five or thirty years. And. Claim that they are. As great a contributor to flooding as projects that were built fifty years ago.
I never said that either, Mark. I asked you because we've had this. What was the result? You said your, your existing vaults contained phase one runoff. So that's a good answer. I'm not saying commercial areas are the same as. Open space, thank God, we have the open space that are sponges that can absorb a lot of this. My point is. We can as sentient humans expect. Absurd amounts of precipitation. And what? And we, you've said, stated that one of the one year storm, a hundred year storms was contained by the vaults. Well, now we're adding phase two onto this. And we're getting rid of a pond, which I'm. You know, having a park versus a pond is more usable, but you're putting a new vault. Outside of this, which is not even. Part of phase two apparently, which is fine, great, wonderful, I'm not criticizing it, I'm commenting on it. But I'm asking. Given the expectation. Of severe rainfall above anybody's ability to contain it. Is there been any study of where that excess flooding water? Will go, will it just go down? Hill into West Market and? West RTC or? Um, will it be channeled down by the curb system down? Town Center Parkway and Sunset Hills, do you have any idea of that? You probably don't.
Well, I mean, I think, I, I think to your point, the question is. What water pellets are you talking about in that scenario, right? So water pellets that hit the top of the buildings or the roof of the buildings or even the streets within the development. It's gonna be channeled into one of these three. Or, or four vaults and the bio retention facilities first and foremost, right? So it'll all be filtered into those based on the plan that Dom has worked through. And then ultimately pumped out to the outfall. Across town center parkway and into that large sixty inch, five foot, five foot pipe that, that Dom was talking about earlier. So all the, all the water that hits the development will end up in that pipe at some point down the line. Water that hits Sunset Hills Road, water that hits town center parkway that doesn't dra- drain into this site. And therefore is not. Put into the bio retention facilities onsite, isn't put into. The vaults onsite. It's gonna sheet flow into the. Into the inlets on Sunset Hills Road or Town Center Parkway or the Metro Site or. Wherever it is and it's gonna, it's gonna flow. Based on where those pipes direct it to go. And so it's, it's difficult in the macro sense, right, that the water in one of those flooding events. That is cascading down. Town Center Parkway or cascading down. Sunset Hills Road is not water that started. On this site. It started somewhere else. And so. I, I get your point about you don't want, none of us want that to happen, right? But it's a, it's a series of systems that ultimately have to work together to be able to contain this. What we're trying to do. Is to deal with the water that physically lands on this site. And to try to capture it and slow it and treat it and release it. To where it's released at a much slower rate. Than the water that is cascading down. Town Center Parkway or Sunset Hills Road or the W N U D Trail or wherever it may be.
Okay, got that. Now, could you go back to the, um? Dom, could you go back to the diagram you have? Uh, not the spreadsheets, but the diagram page. This sort of.
The, the jellyfish page?
Yes, please. There you go, yes, um. Okay, I thought I heard you say. That phase two. Was going to drain into phase one vaults, was that false?
No, that's true, they are.
That is true, okay, so if, if. Phase one vaults. Successfully contain this hundred year storm. How do you expect it to contain, was it only a third full or how do you expect it to contain? Um, phase two being added to those same vaults?
Well, and, and so I. I wanted to clarify this too, it's. The, the, the vaults that we designed in phase one were designed to accommodate. Phase two area and we made assumptions on what phase two may look like. So it's not like new area going into it, it's area that we accounted for in the original design.
Okay, but you have said already to the county. Your maximum possibility. Of accommodating for phase. Two is point seven two, but. Uh, we understand the rules, the rules did not require one inch at that time. And to, uh, Matt's point and John's point. Well, they do now and we'll have to see. You know. Hard to plan backwards. So we get it. But I'm just, I'm interested from a practical standpoint. If those faults are over capacity. And fill up. And can't pump fast enough. Where the hell does the water breach? And, um, we get, and, and Mark, I get. That you're responsible for your site, not the public roadways. That is not, uh, you know. I get, we all get that. But, um. Given that we now are smarter and know that we've had these recent horrendous storms. That are way over what we ever would have dreamt of. Um, this is our new reality. And. I'm sure Boston Properties doesn't want to be known or have the damage to their own, to their own buildings.
So I, let, let me ask the question, Dom, let's assume that we get one of those gigantic storms. And the vault. Fills up faster. Does the pump then just pump faster? Or? Is there a backup out of the drains that would happen if for some reason it can't happen, what's the overflow?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say, we have an overflow pipe that if it gets to a certain elevation, it will spill out unpumped. Um, and I believe that it's.
Mine was spilled out unpump things though, because I don't, I don't think what you mean is what people assume.
So a- as in like, if, if we have a massive hundred year storm, right, and it, it fills the vault up. To a point where the pump is not pumping it out. Fast enough, it will spill into an overflow pipe that ties into this system.
It bypasses the vault.
Yeah.
Goes directly downstream inside the existing pipes. Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't spill out into the road.
But yes, that's sorry, that's right, yeah.
Uh, everybody, I just want to jump in real quick, I'm just conscious of the time, it's already one forty seven and. I, I see Williams had his hands up, so I want to make sure we get to his comment, but also. Um, you know, want to make sure that to the extent folks want to talk about street scape, we leave a few minutes to be able to do that in terms of storm water. William, what, what was on your mind?
I just had a couple of, um, questions here. The term rainwater harvesting usually means that you're. Harvesting it for another use, is that true or is it really just part of, uh, a vault system?
I don't see here. I don't see.
It's used, uh, for the mechanical cooling system.
Okay, great, super. Um, on the vegetated roofs, uh. There was a, a, an image that kept floating by. Uh, but we're all ending up looking at the charts and tables that were below it. Uh, I wanted to know basically what kind of vegetated roof are you putting on? Meaning as, uh, technically they're called a basic vegetated roof, a sponge roof or a purple roof? Of three types.
I have to look at the site plan to, to get. The exact detail for it, because I, I don't know off the top of my head.
That one where it had all the, uh, uh, little boxes that were different types of stormwater retention. It had a section that was immediately above it.
Yeah, let me, let me go to that sheet so I can just look at it.
I, I only would get like five seconds to look at it, was it, was it, as it got zooming by. Yeah, straight up from there. Yeah, there we are. To your right.
Oh, yeah, that's bio retention here.
So. Okay, okay. Uh, okay, it looks like it's for pretty much conventional basic vegetated roof. There is a sponge roof system where basically, uh, below the. Initial water. Uh, diversion, retention, things like that, there is a layer of mineral wool. Which holds and absorbs water fantastically. Uh, been well proven. Uh, and can contribute to your water retention. Um, and then on top of that, there's the purple roof which adds a layer. Of, uh, special fabrics. Uh, where the, some water is retained for the plant's use. As well as what drains through it, uh, is slowed by the direction of the weave of the cloth. And, uh. Uh, you'll get more of a credit for, uh, water retention on the roof. And that will work with any kind of vegetated system you're putting above it, whether it's an extensive, intensive or urban agriculture or whatever.
Okay.
And then, um, and you ought to take a look at that and there's a, a technical organization that's, uh. Headquartered down at, in Culpeper, uh, Semper Green, Lonesome, the space. Uh, and they can do all the testing of these different types of things as well as they have in hand existing tests. Uh, which if you follow that particular scheme, then it will show you what kind of credit you'll get for retention of water. So the other thing was is that, is the urban agricultural roof still on the, uh? I guess the plan to move forward with those? Great, super.
Yeah, still operating up on, uh, the roof of the Volkswagen building.
Great, and are, are those going to be the full roof or is it basically going to be like, uh? Raised bed planting type things?
Yeah, more raised bed, it is a, uh, significant operating expense, um, to, uh, to have that. Up top acres service provided, um, but we do look to add it sort of. Um, selectively for the roots.
Okay, just as a matter of curiosity, what, uh, or not curiosity, but of a, just a matter of making a statement is that. If you should really go and look at some of the ones that are full roof areas, uh. Because, um, two of my projects were converted retroactively about three years, they were an extensive. Standard sedum roof. And up top acres went in and talked to the developer. And they went over to, uh, full vegetated agriculture roof. And they used, uh, mounding for the planting, uh, rows, uh, so there's no, uh. You know. Boxes or anything on it and those two buildings are. Uh, Pike and Rose, the high-rise residential at Pike and Rose and the other one is, uh. I believe the address is ten fifteen Half Street, which is an office building, a couple of blocks from the, uh. Baseball stadium. And bo- both of those use the raised or they have mounds, they like thinking of. How the Irish cultivated potatoes, they ma- they made a mound of, of the rows and put the potatoes into those. But they're doing that with all the vegetation.
Interesting, yeah, I'll, I'll check that out.
Right, it makes it easier for them to maintain them even than, uh, the, uh, boxes. Because they don't have to really. Because they don't have to really dig them out. They can just like slide the things out. So anyway, that was my big points.
Mark, uh, this is Sue Strace. I I do have four questions, um. And I wasn't able to get my hand up, so um. Uh, first is, uh, does the existing wet pond that you mentioned, uh, does that require mitigation and the, I'm simply asking that because if it does require mitigation. We would certainly want to see that mitigated within Reston, not not outside of Reston.
Meaning because we're converting the wet pond into a vault?
Right. Is it a wet pan? Is it is it defined as a a sensitive wetland area? Okay. That requires mitigation.
Almost like a dry pond than a wet.
Okay, got it. Fine. Uh, regarding outfall, um. We've talked about pipes uh, going to the West Market and then to Sugarland Run. Um, after the uh, first meeting on this project. I actually visited that site and uh, walked around the pond, uh, talked with a few people there. Uh, again, it's been a year of moderate drought, but uh, the water was far below the culvert. Um, I did ask people if they had ever in the time they owned uh, their. Uh, seen the water rise to up where there there are a few benches there and they said that, no, no. Um, so I, you know, there are many engineers working on this project and I think we have to put um, some trust in. Um, them uh, managing this, but I I also then drove to where the West Market Pond Pond actually the pipes go into. Sugarland Run and I did not see any extreme erosion there, although along Sugarland there, Sugarland Run, there are other areas that. That that may uh, have some severe erosion. Um. Another question, um, you've mentioned the vegetative roofs, so rainwater harvesting, the urban bio retention and vaults. And. All of those, um. Result in point four two of all stormwater runoff that would be contained on site. Now you talked about that early on in your presentation. And uh, again, it just does seem low. I'm wondering, uh, you talked about it meeting of the Fairfax County requirements. Is this just meeting the requirements? Or what would it take to exceed the requirements? Instead of point four two.
Dom, do you want to tackle that?
Yeah, I mean it. I I think it's, when you say point four two, I think you mean point seven two is what we're getting. And I mean. It would be like. Putting buyer retention. For example, all over the place. In all streetscapes. And you know, and we were conscious of, you know, we have parallel parking along some of the roads, so we can't really put any buyer attention along there. Um. And.
You know how point four two compares to other recent redevelopment projects that are on a big scale like this?
Well, again, it's point seven two. I I'm not sure where the point four two is coming from, but.
Um, okay. Okay, Ben, that that's fine. Um, uh, perhaps I misheard. I was taking that from your first presentation, so. Um, okay, and then my last question is, um, you you do uh, state that any of the stormwater management, best management pr- measures um. Uh, can be changed as long as stormwater BMP requirements and proffers for the site are met. Um. And and you've said that you'll follow new article four regulations, um. And uh, but I I guess I'd like to know what specifically are the proffers? Would the proffers for the site? Um. Cause you to do anything other than the most recent stormwater ordinance? In other words, would it allow you to grandfather uh, things? Or dismiss some of the stormwater best management practices you're you're proposing? Because of what the profits for the site. Not stay.
I can pull the proffers up specifically, but they basically just say we have to do what's on the plan. And so it's.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just it's just tying it to the plan. We used to write these or I used to write all these.
Yeah.
Math related proffers that would talk about reducing it by this percentage or that percentage. And I realized I shouldn't play mathematicians or engineers until we. We just say we'll do what's on the plan.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Mark. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Um, will you be coming back with this? Obviously you'll be coming back with this again.
Yeah, yeah, um, probably. We just resubmitted to staff. A week ago, um. Or two weeks ago, I guess, two weeks ago now, um.
Yeah.
And so we'll be getting some comments back from them. I assume, call it mid, mid April, give or take, um, mid to late April. And then right now we've got a June Planning Commission public hearing scheduled, so my guess is that we'll probably come back to the P and Z Committee for a vote in in May. Um. Just, uh, we got one more minute, then I gotta jump to another call, but at a high level. In terms of changes from the last time that we showed you the plan, there's a lot more detail that we put in this time on. Some of the architectural, um. View sheds for. Uh, you know, perspectives of what buildings will look like. Um, we have a little bit more detail in the proffers on. Some of the uh. Phasing elements in terms of what gets built when and where. The the underlying program is still the same. It's just tightening up a lot of the commitments on what's happened and providing a bit more detail. On some of the buildings and architecture and. Some of the details we've been talking about here. So the overall program is still the same. In fact. Um. The we we've actually added. Uh, drawings into the plan set that show what the future Performing Arts Center could look like, both internally and externally. So that. The county has some detail that they can use to then. Fundraise on for the construction of the facility. So that's going to, that's probably the biggest addition to the plan set that we just submitted to staff. Was the additional detail on the Performing Arts Center.
Okay, could you please, please, please? Uh, consult your landscape architecture firm. And look into that, um. Relatively new planning, planting plan that is much more successful for the survival of street trees. Sort of like the green roofs where you can do better. Uh, the technology exists. So, um.
You're talking about the Stockholm system?
Yes.
Yeah. I sent an email out to everyone about that.
Terr- terrific. Thank, thank you.
Andrew, do you, do you know what they're talking about? Did he, did we lose Andrew?
Yeah, you're on mute.
Sorry, I was, I was, I was, yeah, I was muted. Sorry, I did review the link that was shared around and and we're familiar with those uh. Um, those ideas, so.
Okay. All right, I gotta jump to another call. Um. You guys can stay on and talk if you still need something, but we'll probably be back in front of you in May. Um. With kind of the the final package. Okay. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Bye bye.